I'm telling you, all that vote, they're supposed to have one, but we're just not sure.
No one else thinks I do it. Okay. The board returned to regular session at 2:57 AM. In the personnel's session, there were no votes or decisions rendered in the executive session. Okay. Before we move on from the personnel schedule, on the current resource coordinator, is that a job we continue to have?
Mr. King and Mr. Brunning have been in discussion because they're the two people that fund, that comes from Title I as well as special education. They have been in discussion. They have not come to me with a decision.
Sure. All right. All right. So now let's go back to the personnel schedule. Then we had a motion said, did anyone comment or questions about anything on personnel schedule? If not, we'll ask for a vote on that thing on August, but if yes on personnel schedule. Okay. All right. We're going to the comments and concerns. Do you have any?
I have a couple.
Okay.
Earlier, Ms. Clayton came in and made a presentation to the board regarding 24 pays for our employees. And she had a number, had a petition for her school. And with school closing, you know, just a few days after that, she did send out a message to all of the other schools and asked them to take that. And they did. And I think the, Mr. Bickham has the numbers. But the important part, I think, is the service personnel, the bus drivers, the mechanics, the maintenance. I don't, no one in this building actually voted. And I think it's important that we make sure that we're getting a input from all of them because if you look at having the, their salary over 24 pays, it's going to, of course, reduce, you know, their, you know, service personnel, you know, would be impacted correctly. And so what we, Birdie and I have done this past week, she drafted a letter and then we looked at it and worked on it a little bit. We have not sent anything out. We wanted your all's input regarding mailing to all of the employees, giving them an opportunity to vote before, you know, things ultimately, if you all, if we do it or not. But then that way we can get back. Because the numbers, you know, as you see here, that are reflected, may or may not have taken in all of the, even the service personnel at their school. I don't know if they just ask teachers. I don't know who voted at their school.
Some schools did include service, that others did not. So it's a smattering.
Uh huh. So we didn't want to go forth with the mailing and tell you all, you know. We just felt like that that was the best way to get a complete. And it was the 14th that we would be asking for voting to have the vote back in by July 14th. We would mail them out, put them in the mail tomorrow, and then have a response by the 14th, and then bring it to you all.
Birdie, when does, I guess, Trina, when does, you know, what's the time when this would have to be decided? Are we just implementing this this year?
Well, we're getting ready to do our first 24 pay period on July 15th. So anybody that's a 24 pay is going to get a check on the 15th. And then I think the next group is either on the 30th or August the 15th. I'm not sure. If they got 23 checks, which I don't think anybody gets 23, I think our next one is 22 checks. And that's going to be on August the 15th.
Well, I guess one, one is when the employees come back on August the 15th.
Eight.
How do you think that would, that would be late?
Yeah, I, you know, after thinking about it, because they need, you know, they need some time to digest what's going to happen. Then most of them have summer pay without all their check, and it goes directly to the credit union. So they're going to have to get all that stopped. So we've probably got about 300 teachers out there that's going to be coming in and saying that I don't want this pulled out anymore. So it's going to be some extra work on us to get that all out of everyone's files.
So you were saying that, that it would be too late when school began to do the voting and all that?
I, I would prefer that we do it upfront. Even Trina thought it was too late. She wanted to go ahead and do it earlier. Because I had thought we could, but she's like, no, we need to do it sooner.
Okay. So everyone, most people voted, we get a result, and if we proceed with it, how do we, or is there a way to communicate this to the employees that this is what they want to do? Because it might impact what they do the rest of the year.
We could probably do a phone call at that point in time, couldn't we?
Messenger type thing?
Saying, you know, the vote was da-da-da, we will do 24 checks, you have summer pay, you need to come in and, and stop your summer production.
To the messenger system.
You think that could work, Trish, or Brenda? We can notify employees on it, right?
No, you only can do just to boys.
Well, I'm just, you know, if, if we were to choose to do it.
I don't know. I think we ought to do something in writing. I think you ought to depend on a school messenger.
There'd have to be a letter sent.
Go with the first payroll or some way, just in writing to every employee, that's what you would check.
Or right after we get the vote?
That's where I'm thinking that that interim, before they come back to work, that there's like a month there, and if people's circumstances are different, they may spend money, they wouldn't.
We could just, that's what you're working for.
That's what I was saying. If we can do a vote based in, if we do decide that the vote is affirmative, and we think it's the way to go, that we could send, or a message by messenger, and then also a letter to follow up maybe.
Well, and you put it also in the letter that you send them the vote on. If this passes, we're going to do this on Thursday.
Uh huh. Yes. Uh huh. Yes, we can.
But they wouldn't know if they did it past or not, is what I'm saying.
We could say, well, notify you the results of the vote.
Well, yeah, you could say that. And you could include that. I'm just thinking if somebody's, you know, just not paying much attention, but they live in town and not here. They wouldn't know for a month that we're going to do it, you know. And they might want to save the money or spend more.
But I'm like Brenda, I think, I think it must be in writing, you know, as a follow-up or something to, to give them the, the.
And it's not that hard. You know, the hardest part is getting the letter together, what we want to say. But we, you know, I can zip out labels pretty fast, it's just.
If anybody has any questions, they can call Birdie again.
Yeah, yeah, call, yeah, call Kim Clayton. Now, the other question I have is, is it just the majority vote? It's an authority that goes for it?
Well, that will get to the board to decide.
Well, we'll bring them, we'll bring them the totals. Did we figure out if somebody had actually really explained it to Lincoln County High School? Because that seems to be our.
I don't think so. Well, it just really happened so fast, we just kind of was trying to get a, you know, is there interest other than that due ball? And that's kind of why we did all this. And so.
It did generate some questions up there. And, you know, that Mr. Brunning's brought to me, you know, different questions that staff had. So, you know, I think there are some other thoughts, there's some other, about the interest.
Was, are we going to paint that interest?
You know, so, I mean, you know, so there are other thoughts.
Because when they're drawing for checks, and they're drawing some interest on that night.
They get about five cents.
I was going to say, it's small.
They have to pay taxes on that five cents. But that's still.
But that's just today, you know, who knows what it'll be.
But, you know, ultimately, you will look at the numbers and make a decision. I mean, it could, this one here, I think, is about 78% in favor.
I just did it.
So if it would be something like that. I mean, I just think the school calendar, you know, we really aren't required to do what we do there, but we, that free calendar should go out there. And every one I've ever seen, we've chosen the one where most people voted for all their other, for other ones. So, I don't know if we can decide, if we can see what the results are. But, you know, for 80%, that's, would be a good sign. Okay.
Okay. We talked, last time we talked to, that Fred or Larry want to ask about, someone asked about groundskeeping, and when does that go into overtime? And I think, Birdie, you want to explain that to them, to them.
All right.
When that happens.
No, I'll, I'll find out. So. Okay, overtime. The groundskeepers are posted, and it's the pay grade B. So there's actually a classification for groundskeepers, and we've got those jobs posted. And how many do we have? Three officially groundkeepers? Four official people hire as groundkeepers. So they get paid whatever the grade is. And actually, I'll, I'll do it a, anyway, if you look in your salary schedule and look at B, then you can see what the, it's in the back of your, you know, it's here. You look at pay grade D, B. And then it's based on the year. So that's for an eight-hour day. So they would be paid, they will chub hours, and they will, you know, five years of experience. You take $103 divided by eight, get an hourly rate, they will chub hours, and you're paying for that. Now, most of those guys have other jobs, okay? So varying times of problem.
By other jobs, you mean other jobs with the board?
Yes. Uh huh. Yeah. So it, let's, well, let's talk about maintenance guys. Now, the maintenance guys aren't the groundkeepers or ground crew, but they mow, okay? So those are the people, the people who already have a full-time, eight-hour job, those are the ones who cost the most money. Because once they get on that mower, they're in overtime, okay? So anybody that works for the maintenance department, once they leave that job there, they're going to get their 40 hours in over there. Once they go on a mower, they're automatically in overtime, right? Our mechanic is a tech, and he actually is hired as a groundskeeper, okay? One mechanic, groundskeeper, plus a full-time job. So anytime he does work, he is automatically on overtime. Then we have some bus drivers that do this. Do you know how many bus drivers are groundskeepers? Two. Okay. So your bus drivers are your cheapest, three. So your bus drivers are your cheapest because with overtime, it's not how many hours you get paid for, it's how many hours you're actually working. So, and for the most part, the bus drivers are working maybe two and a half hours a day, okay? They'll work a couple hours in the morning, a couple hours at evening, and you have to automatically give them 30 minutes for lunch. So they get to go out and do several hours of mowing before they ever kick into overtime.
Just back up one, please, please. How many hours do they actually work a day?
Bus drivers?
Yeah.
Probably the most would be, well, except for, I think we've got one.
Yeah, we've got one.
We've got one.
Men's on the run.
Yeah. For the most part, they're probably doing a couple hours in the morning, a couple hours at evening, and then they get a half hour for lunch. So.
So they're getting four or five hours.
Four and a half hours a day. Okay. So then you've got the rest of it that they can work before they, you know, for the other eight hours.
So these four or five hours they work daily, are they on a salary schedule? Is it paid per hour? How are they paid?
They are paid as a bus driver, so they're paid a full day, just as if they've worked for eight hours and paid for this.
But, but the difference is, as Birdie was explaining to me, they don't, the overtime is based upon the actual hours they work, not what they're paid. Because I couldn't make, I couldn't distinguish. So.
Well, I always said, in a day off for a holiday, you didn't, that doesn't count for overtime.
A, a holiday does.
No, no, you've got to work.
Not, not for the schoolwork. It's in code, it's in code. And you have to give them a half hour lunch every day. It's in code. Those are things that are in code.
I understand that.
But holiday.
But if I take a sick day.
Sick day's dog count.
Or a vacation day.
Dog count. But a holiday, you're going to get eight hours of work time, whether you're on the job or not.
Even on time and a half. You get your regular eight hours.
Yes, just eight hours.
That's what I was talking about, time and a half. You're not getting a regular time and a half.
But it goes toward meeting that 40 hours.
It goes that, but it does not, you do not get paid eight hours on a holiday.
No, 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 it's not automatic. But because we know our mechanic does work eight hours. He's on the job and works. The three bus drivers, it's based on the actual numbers they work, not on what they get paid before it goes into overtime. Now, I had just a few minutes, and I ran some reports, if you guys would like to see, what caused for the fiscal year on our groundscrews.
Absolutely.
You would? Yeah.
You may not want to.
What I like to know, how do we ever get ourselves in a position like this?
Well, I think you'd be surprised. But the person, I wasn't the person here. I could just remember. I had been called past.
I'm not one of you.
No, no, yes. As was, I could give you some history. I could give you the total facts. I can tell you my past. That's about it. Okay. Let's look at the first page here, page one. Now, this is the people that we paid overtime. This is only if they kicked into overtime, they got charged to the overtime code. And so I broke it down, how much they got paid. And this is for a full year, you know, we closed the books on June 30th, everybody's paid. So bus driver or mechanic, what they're doing, and you can see how much they made.
And we, like this person, this amount is off, this is what they made.
Overtime. Only overtime.
Oh, okay. So that could have been either into bus driver or groundskeeper?
No, groundskeeper only.
This is for the whole year?
Mm-hmm. And then we're going to go and look at what they got paid for the whole year, but I want you to look at the overtime, because that was the first question. And I put that together, and I thought, well, shoot, in a couple more minutes, I can do the rest over for you. Okay? So you can see that next group there, without mentioning names, that person is working an eight-hour job. So bam, soon as they do groundskeeping, they're on overtime. And then the last bus driver, that's one of those bus drivers who puts in a lot of hours on his run.
The last one, the first person.
Uh huh. So he, he's putting a lot of hours.
He's running his lawn.
Now, on the next page, this is the maintenance department, okay? Now, let me qualify this to say that I'm not 100% sure that every item on here is, is, we're mowing grass, but most of it is. And that's about the only time the maintenance gets overtime is if they're mowing grass.
Because sometimes they are called out in the evening.
Mm-hmm. So there could be, you know, I'll just qualify, there could be some other things here, but for the most part, if they're getting overtime, they're mowing grass. Now, these posts.
From January and February.
Yeah, you can kind of look at the dates.
Well, I want to say, some of the January recall, and February could be that flushing that they had to come out and do in the evenings, and Saturdays.
Of course, that second one, I'm sure they don't do mowing.
Or the third one.
Third one, okay. All right. So, so it's just those, the first one and the last one.
Is the last person on that page a?
Maintenance.
Oh, maintenance.
So that's, that gets charged to maintenance, okay? And like I said, not, there's probably some overtime here, but for the most part, when they do get overtime, it's mowing grass. So for overtime, just overtime, wages, the benefits or anything, we paid out 13, no benefit. For the people who hired, who were hired, we paid 7,000, or 5,741. That's on page one, in overtime wages. Right?
You said the people who were hired, you seen Nancy Brown?
Yes. Mm-hmm. Yes. Yeah, because they get charged directly to this particular call center. For maintenance, we paid out overtime, hold, all year long, 13,446 dollars. And that's on page two. And like I said, there's probably some in there that's not on the grounds. Like Trish said, you kind of look at those names a little bit. But for the most part, it's, the bigger numbers are. Now, on page three, so what I did, I thought, well, shoot, let's just see what we paid each particular person for groundskeeping. So on page three, you can look, and the, the first number's supplemental. So that means they've got supplemental pay, okay? And then it's got the overtime that's attached to the supplemental pays and, and all the grounds.
And supplemental pays is for?
Groundskeeping. Mm-hmm. That's what we consider their supplemental. So they turned in a purple pay voucher, we paid them X dollars. Then we looked at all their jobs, and they worked up 40 hours. So then we had to come back and pay them some overtime.
I mean, that would be different than some of these guys who drive, who might take an extra run or three days or something. That would, that would be different.
No, they didn't get in here. Fred, did you have a question?
Just, just over here, one person.
Oh, that one, I'm not so sure that that's, that second one on page three.
Yeah.
I'm not so sure that that's right. But it got charged here, but I'm not so sure that they do that. Do you know, Jeff, does he do mowing, or did that maybe just get charged?
No, he does not.
Yeah. Yeah, I just, you know, so I think that was probably something I misquoted.
Last one there, $869, something like that.
No, 300. Oh, no. He's talking about F at the top, second line, supplemental pay period, pay in the.
Two weeks, right?
Two weeks, uh huh. Yeah. That wasn't. That's a, that was a pay date. What, that was a date we actually paid them on. And then, so on page four, you know, you have more. And, and again, you can see it's much cheaper for our bus drivers to do this than it is for people who are working 40-hour jobs. Unless you're one of the bus drivers who's already putting eight dollars in.
Okay, now, in the summertime, is what we're saying, they work four and a half or five hours?
No, that's even during school.
During school, and put them in.
Yeah. Yeah, that's just a tricky little thing for people to get their heads wrapped around, because you think, well, you're paying them for eight hours, you know, after 40 hours, they already kick into overtime. But you have to go back and say, how many hours did they actually work?
And, and we have, and brought, because we had all bus drivers, and we had how many hours they actually drove each run that they had, how many hours it takes them to make their run, plus add a half hour for their.
What about their prep time and all that?
That's, that was calculated. That was calculated.
They got 15 minutes prep time. And we have designated specific, this is when you go on clock, this is when you go on clock, morning, evening, you know. So we had to define all those issues. So then on page five, so we paid out 23,884 dollars in regular wages for grounds crew. We paid 5,741 dollars overtime for grounds crew. And then we paid 8,524 benefits for grounds crew. So the grounds crew, which we could isolate all to their self, is 38,000 dollars fiscal year. Then the maintenance, I just went ahead and put their total in here, and then, like I said, I qualified that there, there should be, there's probably a few dollars in there that doesn't belong. But the maintenance overtime was 13,4, benefits was 2,500 dollars. And so that was 15, 15,946. And so we're looking at about 54,000 dollars, give or tag, to mow grass.
With the grounds crew, it was 38,000.
Mm-hmm. Grounds crew.
That's for four or five months?
And then I really, Fred, and I can, I just didn't have time today to look at the maintenance department, but just about everybody, that overtime and maintenance, a good, good chunk of that is for mowing.
At one time, the custodians of the school did this mowing.
It's for about seven months. I think they start in April, April, May, June, July, August, September, and October, that'd be the October, about six and a half, something like that, six months, that is.
In other words, what you're saying, Birdie, this 54,000 dollars, probably 89% is cut the grass.
Well, 100% of that, 38,000 is.
Yeah, I understand that, but the 54, probably some of that was.
Some of that, some of that 15, some of that 15,000 dollars in the maintenance, it would not be.
Yeah.
It would be for maintenance.
And my next question is, did someone sign off on all that overtime?
Yes. 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 We are paid.
After the fact or before the fact?
It's a combination.
Because it is a policy, it'd have to be, you have to sign before they're working on it.
You know, some of the, you say all the groundskeepers, the grasskeepers are cutting, but the groundskeepers have done jobs in our grass cutting.
Yes, they have some gravel making.
Well, different things.
Well, other things. Yes, they have.
But we are, it's possible that those could be in your pig, right?
Yeah, anything that they would have done would have been in there. Yes.
And if they're going to do something other than mowing kind of work, that's scheduled, do they have to get Mr. Smith's approval for work that day? Let's say Mr. Smith, maintenance director, puts a couple guys to do whatever, and he chooses them to do this. And this is beyond their work day and anything, so it's extra. Unless they get Mr. Smith's approval, Dana Smith, unless he gives you approval, Jeff, to assign them to the new operation.
Or Mrs. Lucas.
Well, I've seen where she's delegated some of this.
Well, unless it's an emergency, you know, and we've always said, you know, if it's an emergency, if there's a cooler breakdown, or if there's some kind of a, you know, something, then, you know, we'd say, yeah.
Well, I mean, normally, if Dana has some projects that he wants done, that might be maintenance-related or close to whatever, and he thinks, I don't have enough staff to do it, that employees, that he would have to get you or Jeff to approve, allowing these people to work more than that, right?
Yes.
Just, just like he would have to get his approval for more overtime. Because some of this would be overtime.
Let's say it's August, and we're having a ground, which we normally do this area, and we just keep on mowing on a, on a weekly basis?
No, sir, we shouldn't be.
We shouldn't be.
That's all I can say.
Hardly.
Well, I, I would certainly hope not. And, you know, you know, I would think common sense would say, if you don't send somebody out there to mow, if we've had a drought and the grass is all dried up.
It will.
Now, I've started, want you to know, driving around the schools, made a trip today, zero, one, two, three, four, five, and drove around to check the grass, you know, check to see what projects are, will be worked on, you know, just showing up, you know. And it seemed, you know, to me, the grass seems to be okay. I shouldn't, and I'll be out again. I'm taking on a, you know.
I guess, we would assume, or hope that, that maintenance director, you know, if they have assigned grass duty, that he monitors it and says, well, you know, I don't think he didn't do it yet. Or maybe it's, was that long of rain? Now, you need to go out there ahead of time.
Is he working now? No. I'm making an assumption he'll be back tomorrow, because they had some days that they had to take off. I think I'm wintering it off. But, we have some people that have to take days.
It just seems to me that if someone's going to have to mow the grass, let's say they're going to the new lawnmower field, and they pull in, you know, this doesn't need to be mowed, that they would, instead of unloading the equipment, they'd move on to another location, that you wouldn't have to send somebody out. And you mentioned good common sense, that's where I think good common sense would come in. I go to a field or a school, it doesn't need to be mowed on that particular day, I'll move on to another location. It only would take minutes to do that in the same old time zone.
Did you say you had to vote about this?
No, I wasn't.
You were not a voter.
You weren't a voter.
I'm going to die.
You're not taking you up that. Well, I figured you would pack. Well, and when the principals are back at work, could Dana always monitor for work due date? Would you grant these kind of work yet, or that kind of thing?
Okay, and, and again, I did mention that to the principals at their last, I think, their last meeting. But I talked to Jonah today, was that the last meeting, was not? Is that when he was at the hospital or having a new baby? But I mentioned to him, you know, 'cause I was at his school today, and then he was over here, to make sure that he monitors, you know, the grounds, um, at his, uh, school. Because I don't know if you all came by to see the, the project that Mr. Watson came and told you all about, the, uh, the mows project that they gave them, uh, funds for. They had built a pergola and they, uh, concrete, you know, the place for fences, and they planted some trees, uh, near the side of the building, which is really nice. Have you seen it tomorrow?
It's on page one eight tomorrow.
Okay.
Can you go ahead, though?
Well, you know, I just, I want some good positive things and that's, you guys, you know, something to...
You know, I wanna make something clear. If I sound overly critical of our grounds crew, I, I, I don't want it to sound like, the gra, our grounds look good. And it's certainly likely were many years ago when the grass grew up for the entire summer and you couldn't even see half the school. I mean, that, I'm not questioning, uh, the quality of the work. I think it's pretty clear what I'm questioning. I mean, the grounds look great. Every, everywhere I go, they, you know, they look great. I just think we could change things a little bit here.
And we want them to continue to look nice, they not, not get overgrown to where you have, uh, when you're having it, that's all clumped up, then, you know, the kids are coming back to school and it's... But we need to make sure that we're doing it when it needs.
As efficiently as possible.
And, um, and I think they suck off, make sure that, uh, and that gives me an opportunity to get out during the day, you know? To, to check.
Sorry I didn't see you, but my penos are now full of foliage on this little hardy.
I'm gonna do a little trimming.
I, I ain't been, no, kidding. I just think I would, you know, drop up just to see how, how it looked and...
You'd say you'd see anything?
Oh, maybe.
I'm kinda afraid, binoculars or something. Anything else about groundskeeping, or the report that Bernie's provided, just if I have kind of a field plan there for you? If I have campus?
Yeah, I have one thing, uh, what are we gonna do about that extra sign over there?
The one we got, times down, I mean, you're really scraping the barrel.
I was heading for vacation, I was struggling, so, go to my favorite topics when I'm struggling for a thumbs down.
Thought you'd bring it back up.
Whatever happened to my suggestion of the panther? I understand the kids, I understand the kids were really enthusiastic about that.
And, and Mr. Snyder took them, took some ideas from the students, is that incorrect?
Yeah.
And sent them with us? We'll just have to follow up with that and see what the status is, careful, everybody, you know?
Seems a shame to spend that much money and just tear something down to a foundation. It's not, it is an eyesore.
Sometimes we're just naming a hush shot.
Okay, that's okay, good. Anything else, Fred, there? Okay, uh, if there's nothing further, then we'll adjourn our meeting until July the seventh, two thousand sixteen, six o'clock, here at our office in Hammonds. Everybody knows that in the new fiscal year, and we'll have our organizational meeting, I hope that, mind, please, could I have most adjourned?
Sure.
A second.
Ms. Warwick Wilkerson, Carol Second, all yes?
Yes.